Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvey. Please stand.
Please bow your heads.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Lord, Lord, we thank you for all the successes that the city experienced during the ice storm and for all the city employees and contractors that chipped in to make that happen. Lord, we pray for a rapid wind down of the pandemic and victory over COVID. We pray for those, Lord, who have lost loved ones or have experienced sickness or financial loss, Lord. Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present. Council, in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 4219 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet core requirements, some Bossier City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If anyone is uncomfortable in coming to this meeting, they are welcome to call 318-549-4595 at this time for public comments on any agenda item in accordance with recently passed Act 302. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with adopted City Council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question and answer session, and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please no foul language, or the call will be disconnected and you will forfeit your right to speak. Counsel, there's been no virtual public comment.
Need a motion to approve the minutes from the February 23rd, 2021 special council meeting in dispense with the reading.
Sound move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Counsel, we have two add-ons today. The first one will be number seven under new business. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, to proceed with not to exceed $50 million financing through the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority for the purpose of refunding certain bonds of the authority and providing for other matters in connection therewith. This item is being requested to be add-on due to time restraints on bond savings.
I move we add this to the agenda.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Counsel, the second item that's a requested add-on is introduce an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $130 million of taxable utilities' revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021 of the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of the general bond ordinance adopted on July 6, 2010, providing for the sale of such bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And this item is being requested to be added due to time restraints on the bond savings.
Sound move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? We'll go into more detail when we get into the actual regular meeting. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to accept-
I can make a motion to add these two to the agenda.
And approve as amended?
I'm sorry?
And approve as amended?
As approved as amended.
He wouldn't let me finish.
He was in a hurry.
You're right.
All right.
I have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Harvey.
All right, great. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. I believe we had an item under ceremonial matters. Mr. Kelly Wells with the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission asked for a few minutes of your time.
All right, Mr. Wells, welcome. I know you've been here many times. If you could state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Okay. Is it okay to-
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Kelly Wells, Executive Director of the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission. Address?
No, that's good.
Okay. Bossier City.
We know where to find.
Thank you for your time and for adding us on, and I'm sure each of y'all heard the Governor earlier today. And of course, we're doing really well with the sporting events. And today's announcement from the Governor, we're still kind of digesting, but it looks like it's heading in the right direction. I wanted to request some funding for a event we got coming up on April the 16th, the Bayou Classic, which is in its 49th year. It's a historic matchup between Southern and Grambling University. The game will be played at the Independence Stadium. And one of the unique things with the Bayou Classic is it's not just about the football game. It's about the weekend experience, of course, with the COVID and everything that's been taking place and organizing events. They did cancel out the Battle of the Bands, which with the Bayou Classic Weekend is one of the two key features besides the game. What we do know at this point is that the, and again, I was talking to the Fire Marshal on the way over here to kind of see how the Governor's stuff today, how it affects the game. And so it should be a couple of days before we realize what we're at. Heading into the day, we were looking at 25% capacity for the stadium, which is about 12,500. What we feel like it will go to is, you know, 50%. But again, that won't officially come out for a couple more days. The event, right now, in the 20 years that I've been with the Torres Bureau and Sports Commission, it's been a long time since I've seen an event that has really booked out the city with the hotel rooms, et cetera, like what the Bayou Classic has done. You know, we announced that back in the fall, and it kind of leaked out two days before. All of our hotel rooms were filled up on that Friday, Saturday, before the Monday announcement. Of course, you know, moving forward and with the Battle of the Band, we did lose a little bit, but I did pull some reports that right now we're about 83% hotel occupancy within the Shreveport Bossier market. How we do, we did split up between the Southern and Grambling football teams and cheerleaders, and of course, the bands aren't coming over, but it's a pretty equal split of economic impact as far as the hotels, et cetera, for this game. One thing that we were asked to do is we're asked to do before, like for the Miss USA, Miss Teen USA, for the Bassmaster Classic with these larger events, to kind of be the fiscal agent for these large impact events. So one thing we're looking at with the request for the funding is with not having the Battle of the Bands and with this event being in New Orleans for the last 48 years, is really adding some of those ancillary events that really make the Bayou Classic what it is. So of course, today's announcement, I think, is going to really open things up, you know, as far as what we're, the abilities and things we're able to do. So we are, the Lieutenant Governor's on board, you know, the city of Shreveport's on board. I'm speaking to y'all today, and then I'll go to Bossier Police Station tomorrow, but I'd like to request 15,000 to go towards marketing, ancillary events, promotion of the game. At this point, based on the 12,500 attendees, we're at about a $2.5 million direct impact on the area hotels, restaurants, and shopping. If we feel like, you know, not speculating, but if we're able to take that up to 25,000, or sometimes with these venues, it's not a clear-cut, you know, 50% increase, but we feel like with, you know, 22,000 to 25,000 at the game, that could close to double that impact. The reason for the ancillary events around the game is because with the game being on a Saturday afternoon, historically, they come in on a Thursday or Friday, you know, the fans and alumni, et cetera, and then they leave out on that Sunday. So adding the ancillary events will really help us keep them longer and, again, provide that experience, you know, for something that we probably wouldn't have never got to host before, had some of the, you know, virus-related issues happened, and it would have stayed in New Orleans. So that's basically, in a nutshell, what we're looking at. We've been planning on this for a few months. We didn't want to come before the different bodies until we had a really good feeling. These funds would go to the Torres Bureau Sports Commission. We would be the fiscal agent of that, you know, to make sure that the dollars are allocated out for marketing and advertising locally and regionally to have the biggest economic impact. And then some of the funds would be used towards ancillary events and some of the other things surrounding the Bayou Classic Weekend.
Who's putting on these ancillary events? Is somebody doing it, or y'all are directly doing it or what?
We're not putting on one of the events at this point. I think today's announcement really helped out because before, you know, the bars were closed. I think they reopened out 25%. So it's been really hard to do some of these events. So the events that we know of right now is there will be an opening kickoff somewhere. We're not sure yet. Again, some of that may change after today, but there'll be an opening event where, you know, 500 or 600 people. We're looking at the Festival Plaza area. Again, where it was at 3,000 heading in a day, now we're hoping that that will jump up to 6,000. So that's the large festival area outdoors that really meet the COVID, you know, requirements to have a lot of people there. We're also looking at an expo taking place at the Convention Center that Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Of course, the game will be Saturday afternoon. And so those are the events that we're aware of now. These funds would go towards those official events surrounding those areas. There'll be a lot of folks who do different things aside from what we do. That's kind of how they do it. They use that weekend and really to provide that overall experience. So, you know-
I guess my question basically is, is it going to be the Convention Bureau Tourism going to put these events on, or the Sports Commission is going, or is there someone else that's involved in this putting these events on?
I believe for the expo, the African-American Chamber is putting on the expo on that Thursday through Saturday. The festival is Let the Good Time Drill Festival, a guy named Fred Moss, and then one of the larger patronies or sororities are partnering together on that to do that Friday, Saturday festival. In fact, we weren't even able to call it a festival until today. And then the opening event would be a community-wide Shreveport Bossier welcoming event for sponsors, the Southern and Grambling Presidents and Administration, and then some of the key stakeholders around town. So they're looking at, other than the game, which NOCCI, the organization of New Orleans, that Grambling and Southern have contracted for many years to oversee the game, everything else is done through promoters. So I don't know if I answered your question on that end, but what we would do, a majority of the dollars would go towards marketing and covering, offsetting some of those expenses so that they could have it. But we feel very confident. And again, there may be a lot of other events that are taking place, like at the bars and stuff, but we won't necessarily get involved with those. We just want to focus on the key drivers that these alumni and fans and schools are accustomed to getting in New Orleans, but putting a Shreveport Bossier, you know, Bossier-Shreveport flair to it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Kelly.
Okay. If you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you for your time.
Got some bids?
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P21-01 Sidewalk Improvements Project.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $400,000. There were two addendums. One was the list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting and provided questions and answers. The second was postponing the opening due date due to inclement weather. The first bid is from CWNW Contractors, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $320,319.50. 320319.50. The next bid is from Darren Bailey, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $258,775.258775. The next bid is from Patrick Gates Divine Interventions Mobile and Detailing Lawn Care, LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $345,500.345500. The next bid is from James R. Martin Building and Remodeling, LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $309,690.309690. The next bid is from JD's Rebar and Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $306,080.80.306080.60. The next bid is from RVP Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $272,250.272250. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Sound move.
Second.
Counsel?
Public comment.
Public comment. Any questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P21-02 Citywide Street Rehabilitation Phase 1.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $375,000. There were two addendums. The first provided a listing of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and the second was, oh, I think I got that backwards. The first was changing the bid date to today due to inclement weather, and the second was the list of attendees to the pre-bid mandatory meeting, revised the bid form, had a geo-report, changes to the drawing, and questions and answers. First bid is from Benton &amp; Brown, LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $488,350.488350. The next bid is from Dale's Paving, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond's included. It's for $386,675.386675. And the last bid is from Ernest Contracting, LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $439,023.75.439023.75. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Sound move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P21-03 Citywide Street Rehabilitation Phase 2.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $500,000. There are two addendums. The first, postponing the mandatory pre-bid meeting due to inclement weather. The second was the list of attendees at the mandatory pre-bid meeting and questions and answers. The first bid is from Dale's Paving, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $389,000 even. Three, I'm sorry, I said it backwards. 398.398000. And the last bid is from Ernest Construction, LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for $400,000 even. 4000000. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Sound move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopters, new business, adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Xavier Lopez, Heritage Enterprises. Location Airport Annex Lots 12, 13, 20, and 21. Request a zoning amendment to change the zoning classification from RLD, residential low-density, to RMD, residential medium-density for a proposed apartment complex.
Sound move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Rajah Kahad, I don't know if I've said that right, I'm sorry. United LLC. Location 2201 East Texas Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. Conditional use approval for the sale of low-content alcohol for off-premise consumption at a convenience store.
Sound move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Francisco Avails, El Dorito Mexican Grill. Location 2650 Airline Drive, Suite 100, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high- and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant.
Sound move. Sorry.
I have a motion by Mr. Harvey.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of three police officers for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
Sound move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police communication officer for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
Sound move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing a promotion from within and the hiring of one employee due to resignation in the purchasing department, all within the existing budget, first and final reading.
Sound move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Free, for some reason, yours just got kicked off.
See that? I vote yea.
You vote yea, okay. Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, to proceed with not to exceed $50 million financing through the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority for the purpose of refunding certain bonds of the authority and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First reading.
Sound move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, Phyllis, I guess I can speak to both of these in total on the upcoming number eight. Is there, there'll be these two refundings?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Will be done in conjunction with one another. We had a meeting last week with our financial advisors and, you know, monitoring the marketplace over the past year has certainly been difficult at best, but now things have settled down and the market and the timing to get our refunding here, which to compare it to the average citizen out there, it's like going and refinancing your home. So you get a lower interest rate, your mortgage payment goes down. So in this case, we have debt associated with all of our utility systems. And in this case, by refunding these or refinancing, we're going to save over $1 million a year in total, one issue being 18 years remaining life, the other one being 21 years remaining life. So that is a tremendous savings to the taxpayers and, again, shows our financial prowess and expertise in monitoring the market, staying abreast of the market, and doing what's in the best interest of the taxpayers of Bossier City. And, again, providing additional revenue, in this case by reducing debt service, which keeps us at steady rates going forward for our utility system. So hats off to the whole team, Stacy, your team, Kent Snedt-Snyder with Sisong and his team, and the administration, and the council. When you can step up to the plate and react to the market and react as quick as we do and save $1 million a year, which in total is, you can add it up, over $20 million, it makes a difference. So with that said, are there any questions from the audience? Any comments from the council? Please cast your vote.
Mr. There you go. Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $130 million of taxable utilities revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021, of the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of the general bond ordinance adopted on July 6, 2010, providing for the sale of such bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First reading.
Sound move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Under reports, we have Stacy Fernandez, City Finance Director, monthly financial report.
Counsel, I'm reporting to you for January because I was out of town last week. It's good news. We are at 130% to revenue. We are only at 76% of expenses. And this, again, because of our being so fiscally sound and having such strong numbers, is how we're able to get these low rates that are saving us the million dollars a year. Page three is the sales tax report, and if you notice, we're up seven and a half percent for the month of January. That is compared to pre-COVID numbers, so we're very strong. The fourth page is our Manning report. We're at 662 employees to a budget of 690. So we're 28 under, and we're three down from last month. Finally, our water and sewer report, again, excellent numbers. Year-over-year, we're at 155% to budget. We're at 230%, and the rolling 12 months, we're at 121%. You have any questions?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment once again, that if you listen to those numbers through the month of February on the cash basis, correct?
This through January.
Through January.
Yes, sir.
Going through, we are up four and a half percent.
That's as of the end of February.
February with the cash basis.
Yes, sir.
So that's what I was referring to.
Yes, sir.
So I know, but I just thought it was such great news, that we're up four and a half percent on sales tax, which, for everyone out there in the city and those here today, represents roughly 80% of our revenue stream for the general fund. So it gives you a little enlightenment how important sales tax are to keep our fire and police and all of our other employees. And we're up four and a half percent for two months over last year, pre-COVID, all right? So those numbers are not skewed by the pandemic. It shows that we, as a council, the administration, invest in the correct formula and the economics to make this city continue its growth, so that we can continue to provide those services necessary and that our citizens deserve and expect.
Yes, sir.
Is that fairly stated?
Yes, sir.
And would you also agree, as a certified public accountant, in your position as chief financial officer, that we run this city in a fiscally conservative and sound manner each and every day?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Justin Haydale with Manchak, an update on the Walter O'Bigby Carriage Way.
Good afternoon, counsel. I too have some good news.
Is that T double O?
Excuse me?
Is that T double O, two?
Two.
Yes, two, T double O. The last time I updated the council was January the 19th. A lot has happened since then. The biggest thing is, we're waiting on the approval from the Corps on the project, and we're getting feedback from them that we should have permits in hand as soon as tomorrow, possibly by the end of the week, which is what we've been waiting for before I would recommend we would advertise for bids. So I am going to recommend that we advertise for bids. I've already sent the advertisement to Purchasing, to Liliana, with the first advertisement starting Wednesday, March 10th, and run for 40 days, because it's a bigger project, so we feel like we need to do it for a little bit longer than the standard 25 days, and that would have a bid opening of May the 4th. So that's my recommendation to the council. There may be some minor comments from the Corps, still might be some minor comments from DOTD. We can address those in the body of an addenda, which I'm certain we'll have to issue during the course of bidding the project. Any questions on that? The next item on my agenda is the railroad. Of course, that's all news, we have that. The utility relocations have come a long way. I guess you've seen SWEPCO, which is Primoris, or I think that's the name of the company they've hired to put the new poles and the new wires up. They're going to be complete with all that work on March the 15th. Then they're going to start demolition of the old infrastructure, the old poles and the old power lines. So AT&amp;T and Suddenlink, two of the companies that were kind of the longer lead, they're going to be forced now to get their infrastructure off the old poles and on to the new poles. So hopefully, it'll all be done by April the 9th, is what we're hearing from SWEPCO. And besides that, the only person we'd be waiting on after that would be CenterPoint, which is not really that big of a deal. They got a small gas line, the city approved an easement through the water plant and that work. They're telling us by May 28th, I think it'll happen before then. We've got the majority of the DOTD permits in hand. The two permits that we don't have yet are the intersection control device permits. Those are in Baton Rouge. We don't foresee there being any major comments on those. They've already had comments that we've addressed. I think they're a little delayed because of the weather event and all that, so that should be forthcoming pretty soon. We're complete with the design on the lighting for the roadway portion. As I previously told you all, that's going to be a separate project. The 20-inch waterline relocation at Green Acres Office Park, we had to do that to accommodate the drainage that DOTD wanted. Final adoption of that ordinance to appropriate the money will be on the city council agenda March 16th. The last item I have on my agenda is the Citizens Bank Drive Stormwater Pump Station. The design is underway, so if anybody has any questions about anything, I'll be happy to answer them.
I know we've been waiting for this day for 20 years. Certainly, again, a monumental task. Many of the council members have been here, and we've, now, the light is there, that we will finally connect the South Bossier Arthur Ray Teague Parkway to North Bossier via the Walter O'Bigby Carriage Way, and can't thank you enough for your efforts and the administration's efforts. It's been a long journey. It was a campaign promise made, Mayor, if you recall, 20 years ago, by all of us. It's, uh, it's been a long and tough road, and, but we're there, and Mr. Haydale, your team, and can't thank you enough that we finally will see a road built, and we will not have to stop at a railroad and look at each other ever again, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to work on it. I played somewhat of a minor role in the whole thing compared to y'all, but we'll, we'll get it done.
Awesome. I think that, Mayor, if you don't, Pam, if you could, y'all could come to the mic, please? I figured you needed to walk a little bit, since we've been here sitting for 40 minutes, but I, I think it's cause for celebration. This Friday, if y'all could please organize a ribbon cutting to let everyone know that we're going to let, we're going to go out for bids on this. Yeah, I think it's important to get this message out, again, that's something that we all have been working diligently on for a long time, and it's important to let the people know. So if y'all could put that together for Friday, I don't know where the best place would be, probably not off Benton Road, but maybe at the New Beginning, you know, on the south end?
Yes, sir.
Which is going to connect to Walter O'Bigby Phase One. Y'all can work out the logistics. I'm just thinking Benton Road's a pretty hectic place, you know, especially during the day, so.
We will take care of it.
All right, and we'll announce that to the public, and we welcome everyone to come out and celebrate with us. Thank you.
And I'll just take advantage of this opportunity to say, in the governor's press conference today at 1:00, he did indicate that effective tomorrow, we will move to a phase three of the recovery, and there will be changes in the numbers of people that can go and percentages, and, and that is, and our percentage of positive cases now is right about 5%, which is the goal of 5% or less. So we are making progress, but there's still pushing the need for the prevention and mitigation protocols.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
David, do you mind if I say one thing?
No, sir. You have the floor, Mr. Williams.
I usually don't like to speak up, but, you know, what David said, it takes 20 years. You know, some people out there think, excuse me, some people think you can get things done in four years, eight years, 10 years. He's correct when he says, we've been working this for 20 years, and it takes a long time to do a big project like this. And the continuity of this council with the administration is what does it, you know? So I'm thankful and fortunate that I'm here this long, and everybody else, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We should remind everyone that early voting begins this weekend.
This Saturday?
Yes.
Absolutely, and we encourage everyone to vote. It's your God-given right here in America to express your opinion and your satisfaction, so we encourage everyone to vote. One thing, Mr. Roshnback, I was going to point out, it looks like we saved several hundred thousand dollars on these bids between street and sidewalks. If I'm not mistaken, if it's possible, when we go forward, if we could increase the scope of the streets and sidewalks that we're going to repair, so that we can accelerate that process, I think that would be wise.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Yeah, we've, we've already got out items that need to be repaired, so I was pleased to see where these numbers came in, looking forward to some of the next phases.
Make sure we utilize the funds as fast as we can.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, man, what was, were those, this may seem like a weird question, but I ask weird questions. Does those separate the concrete versus the blacktop or asphalt?
Sort of. You know, you have, you have the sidewalk portion, which is going to be concrete, the phase one portion, that is a asphalt street section, and then phase two is a mixture of both concrete and asphalt. So then, we would try to block those phases to kind of keep one type versus the other, but the nature of the projects, it's kind of difficult to do that, so. We're pushing, trying to get these things on the streets. I was happy to see those numbers. It's good for the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Anything else? Everyone have a great week, and go vote. Meeting adjourned.